Budget comments, actually. So I'll turn the time over to Mayor Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have lengthy comments tonight except for yet another round of thanks to everyone involved, and that includes the council, staff, of course, the budget team, our independent electives, the many program directors and managers who took the time months ago to be thoughtful about their requests that move forward very early in the process. So I'm proud to have been at the county for a very long time, and this is always a night of really, I think, reflection of the work that we've done and the work that's to be done. And it's always been a collaborative effort. So I think probably thousands of hours go into this process, and it really is one of, it's obviously our critical duty to divine our programs and our priorities through this process. So it may not seem always so exciting to the public, but it is critical to good government and to creating a system where people can go in and enjoy free rec centers for their kids and enjoy our libraries and feel safe in our community with good district attorneys, operations, and sheriffs and everyone in between. So without trying to leave anyone else out, just my hats off to all of the hard work. And thank you, council, for your deliberations over the last, oh, I guess, six, seven weeks or so. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mayor. So at this time, I will turn, I will open the public hearing, and...
Madam Chair, I will make a motion in that regard that we open the public hearing.
Second. Great. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And I do want to make a note that we do have some council members online. I believe it's Councilwoman Amy Winder-Newton, and that's it. So thank you for joining. I don't see Councilmember Stringham, so no. Okay. So we'll keep moving on to public comments. Is there anybody here in the room that would like to give public comments? And if not, is there anybody online? You do have someone online? Okay, great. Thanks.
Hello, this is Steve Van Marren, resident of Draper, 14178 South Bangor Parkway. I didn't specifically want to speak to this because I didn't hear the introduction. It was about seven minutes after when the audio came on virtually. So I'll be back. I have some comments later. Thank you.
Okay. Steve, I'm not following you. As far as, what do you mean, be back? Is he still there?
Just that the audio was delayed to the, to my, at least to my computer. I could, I didn't know what, you started the meeting, you know, if we don't have audio, we don't know if the meeting started.
Oh, okay. We have started the meeting, and we are doing public comment right now. If you'd like to comment.
This is general comment, or it's public hearing comment?
Yeah, this is, this is for the hearing, yes.
Okay. I didn't hear the introduction to what hearing it was. I apologize. I'll pass at this time. I'll come back later for one of the other topics.
Well, this is the public meeting for the budget, so this is technically the time to comment. There won't be another time.
I don't get to comment on the LRB and MBA and...
Oh, yes, of course. That's a separate meeting, though. We'll close this now, and then we'll go on to those. So if you want to wait, if you want to comment on any of those, we'll get to the...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else online that wants to comment? Okay.
Madam Chair, seeing no further public comment, I will motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, that passes. And then we will move to item six, which is discussion and approval of the Salt Lake County Budget Resolution 2025, budget in 2024 budget adjustments. So that will be 6.1. This is consideration of a resolution of the Salt Lake County Council adopting a final budget for fiscal year 2025 for Salt Lake County offices, departments, and agencies, including proposed tax revenues, budget appropriations, and personnel allocations, adopting compensation adjustments for county officials and employees, adopting adjustments for the fiscal year 2024 budget, certifying compliance with certain requirements of Utah statute, and Salt Lake County ordinance and related matters.
Madam Chair, I just have a small housekeeping item that's in regard to the 2024 budget adjustments that we had made earlier. Earlier, $47.5 million appropriation was voted on, which was intended to supplement a $1 million deposit we made for a real estate transaction. It turns out that the $1 million had never been appropriated, so I'd like to motion that the council approve the full $48.5 million for that real estate transaction. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve that real estate transaction. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that passes. I also realize that I kind of missed our council comments, so if anybody has any comments, please speak now. So I'll just make a quick comment, actually, in regards to the budget. We have worked hard. I appreciate the mayor and all of her staff who have worked diligently to put all this together and all the hours that have gone into it. It's been a challenging and tight budget year, and we have had to make some cuts here and there. And so, but I will say, I think residents, from what I've learned this year, really appreciate the services that we provide here in Salt Lake County, and they do see a value in the work that we do here. So I think there's a lot of good things that we've done throughout the year, and we'll continue to provide good services here in Salt Lake County. So I wanted to give you that information, and thank you. Okay, so if there's no other comments, then...
Madam Chair, I will motion approval of item 6.1, the budget resolution.
Second.
Okay, I have the motion to approve item 6.1, the budget, and I believe we need a roll call vote for this one?
Yes, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, awesome.
Councilmember Albert?
Thank you. Before I make my vote, I just wanted to indicate my reasons for voting today. I recognize the many hours that went into this budget. I recognize that it funds many wonderful programs that are essential to the county. During the budget process, my office was able to identify what we felt were appropriate cuts that totaled $28 million. Unfortunately, most of those were not agreed upon. If some combination had been agreed upon, that could have gotten me to a yes on this budget. But the line that was too far for me in this budget was the elimination of some senior policy advisors to the council. I found my policy advisors to be invaluable and have actually helped me serve my district better. I think cutting those positions is destructive to the county and a line too far. And because of that, and the failure for us to find enough cuts in this budget, I'll be voting no today. Thank you.
Councilmember Bradshaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Winder-Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bradley?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Granato?
Aye.
Councilmember Theodore?
Aye. Okay, sounds like that motion does pass, so congratulations, I guess. And so we'll adjourn now for the RDA and municipal building authority boards. So thank you.
Kim, just let me know when we're good to go.
Okay. It takes a minute to move over. Okay.
All right, we will go ahead and call to order a meeting of the Redevelopment Agency of Salt Lake County. We are here for our annual budget hearing. Deana, did you want to give any intro before the, before we opened the hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I would say is that I have the presentation, the PowerPoint presentation, that had additional information about the budget that was presented at the last meeting, if you want that up. So just to say that that's available if you, if you want me to...
Okay.
That's it.
Do any members of the board need that additional information before the hearing or before you vote on the budget resolution?
No.
No.
No? Okay. Well, then I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion from Board Member Harrison and a second from Board Member Theodore. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is open. Are there any members of the public in the room that would wish to address the board? Seeing none, are there any online?
Mr. Chair, seeing nobody available for public comment, I move that we close the public comment section. Close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Board Member Harrison and a second from Board Member Granato. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any additional comments from the board before we go to our discussion items? All right, moving right along, we have three items and minutes for approval. The first is 5.1, discussion and approval of the Salt Lake County RDA 2025 budget. Are there any comments from the board, questions of staff, or a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Board Member Harrison and a second from Board Member Bradley to approve 5.1. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that is approved. That takes us to item 5.2, which is discussion and consideration of an interlocal agreement between Salt Lake County and the RDA of Salt Lake County to receive administrative services from the county for RDA activities within the jurisdiction of the RDA. Are there any comments, questions of staff, or a motion?
Move to approve item 5.2. Second.
We have a motion from Board Member Harrison, a second from Board Member Theodore. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That item is approved, and that takes us to item 5.3, which is a resolution of the Governing Board of the RDA of Salt Lake County to explore and negotiate a transfer of the project areas to the Community Reinvestment Agency of Magna City. Are there any questions, comments, or a motion?
Move approval of item 5.3.
Second.
We have a motion for approval from Board Member Harrison and a second from Board Member Granato. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? That is approved. Board Member Harrison?
Excuse me, sorry. Move approval of the minutes from November 19th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Board Member Harrison, a second from Board Member Granato to approve our minutes from November 19th. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Is there any other business for the board? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Back to, back to you, Dee.
Great, thank you. Are you ready? Are we ready to go? Okay, awesome. Okay. So, welcome to the Salt Lake County Municipal Building. Are you okay? Are we good?
Yeah, I'm not in.
Okay, I'll wait till you're ready.
I'm out.
Oh, is it? Okay, make sure he gets to comment then. But I'm not seeing that agenda. I don't have the agenda in granicas. Do you have my copy? The program. I don't have the agenda for the program. I'll have to use this. The program, I don't have the agenda for the program, I'll have to use this. I was able to find it. Okay, we good to go? Okay, thank you. Okay, welcome to the Salt Lake County Municipal Building Authority, meeting for Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand twenty-four, and just want to welcome you guys, and let's see here. Let's see, we need to open it, right? Open.
Madam Chair, I move approval that we open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, moving on to public comment, is there anybody in the room that would like to comment during this time? Okay, teasing me. Okay, and I know we do have some people online that would like to comment, so let's... Okay, go ahead and let him in. Steve? Okay, Steve, if you'd like to comment now, floor is yours.
He's muted.
Oh, he's muted?
There he goes.
Okay, hi, Steve.
Madam Chair, I have some... I'm late looking at this, but I'm sorry, I have some questions about the labels on the transfers, the detail of the budget on the second page, or no, let's see, page four of the budget. There's some items labeled, no, I'm sorry, page three, the lib... items labeled MBA projects, but on the second sheet, there's no revenue showing. It all went into the debt services municipal building authority. I'm just confused. Are there really two funds? What's going on? Thank you. I won't ask the detail of decreases, but they concern me that you're not paying as much this year or next year as you did this year. Thank you.
Yeah, and I can help with that.
Okay, so we do have Greg Foltto on the line, if he would like to address this, perhaps?
I think, yeah, Darren can handle that one, I think, on the MBA, and then I can answer anything that's on the NHTCA for the foundation that's coming up.
So, I'll just comment. The municipal building authority is an authority granted under state statute, quasi-governmental jurisdiction under state statute, that is established to build and construct and then lease buildings, and it issues debt. So, the municipal building authority of Salt Lake County has issued debt for a variety of buildings throughout the county, including public works admin building, library buildings, and senior centers. And it, once the buildings have been constructed, it enters into a lease with Salt Lake County government, and Salt Lake County government leases those buildings back from the municipal building authority, and the lease payments approximate or are exactly the same as the debt service requirements of the municipal building authority. And so, the library system, the senior centers, and public works groups that are affiliated with our Midvale Public Works sites pay lease payments out of their budgets to the municipal building authority. The municipal building authority in turn pays the registered agent of our bonds, and those lease payments basically pay the debt service. And so, any transaction that occurs within the municipal building authority is usually technical. It's always designed, there's no appropriations outside of the debt service appropriation, unless there's construction funds. I don't know, Greg, can you, if I handled that properly, you want to comment? But it really is a technical adjustment. If a line item went down, it meant that there was probably slight decreases in debt service for a particular building that we have.
Right, and if there may have been transfers from one of the, you know, like from the library fund or one of the other funds that's doing a project in any given year, you may have a transfer a year of the project or the year we're closing out a bond, et cetera, but they wouldn't necessarily be in there every year. So, is that, maybe that's answered your question, Steve?
Yeah, if there's a, if there's a construction amount and the construction is closed and the project is finished, then the construction fund will be transferred to the debt service fund to mitigate the lease payment.
Right, and then, yeah, in some years, it could be a left, you know, some remaining balance that we transfer back to one of the other operating funds, et cetera. So, those vary from year to year.
I'm sorry, I can accept that, thank you.
Thanks.
Right, thanks for your question and participation, Steve, and thanks for everyone that answered. Well, is there any other public comments online or in the room? Any comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comments and go to discussion items. First one is five point one, which is a resolution of the governing board of the Salt Lake County Municipal Building Authority, Utah, adopting the annual budget required for fiscal year 2025, approving and providing for the necessary tax revenues and other revenues to fund the budget, approving and providing for adjustments to the 2024 budget, if any, and related matters. Is there any questions or comments on this item? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the budget resolution five point one.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Board Member Bradshaw and a second by Board Member Harrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? That passes. Moving on to five point two, consideration of a resolution of the municipal building authority of Salt Lake County, Utah declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures for the financing of project costs associated with the construction of libraries and a collection resource building. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move approval, item five point two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Board Member Harrison, the second by Board Member Albert. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move approval of item six point one, approval of the October eighth minutes.
Great, do I have a motion for that?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, motion by Board Member Harrison, second by Board Member Albert, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes.
We should note that Board Member Stringham has joined us and voted on that.
Yes, that's true, I do see them. So, item number seven, other committee business. Just that we have two councilmembers waving to us, that's great, thank you. And we will adjourn our meeting, so thank you, everyone.
Right, I will take over, I guess, at this stage, with two agendas, one being the Salt Lake County Foundation, and the members of that board are myself, member Laurie Stringham, member Suzanne Harrison, and member Treasurer Wayne Cushing. So, I would welcome you to the meeting, which is intended to review a couple of items, including the discussion approval of the 2024 budget, including some 2024 adjustments. And the first item is the minutes were displayed earlier, and I would be open to an approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, so moved.
All right, I have a motion from Member Harrison, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Oh, there's member, okay, we've got a second from Member Stringham. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, the minutes are passed. I now entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, so moved.
All right, we have a motion to open, do I have a second?
Second.
Next second, a second from, we'll go with Member Cushing this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any members of the public who would like to address the Salt Lake County Foundation at this time? All right, we do have comments. We'd like to welcome Steve Van Marin. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a comment, well, I guess I do. Congratulations on the large contribution by the Merler Foundation, and I see that you look forward to another five million from somewhere next year. Thank you for your effort.
Great, well, we appreciate that comment, ditto to that, so thank you very much. All right, with that, I would go to the next agenda, or I'll take a motion to, assuming no other public comment, correct? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Member Cushing. All in favor of closing the hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will close. All right, moving on to board comments. Do we have any comments from our board members regarding the budget or any of the adjustments?
No, I move for approval, though.
All right, we will accept the motion for approval, and I will just clarify, that is a motion on accepting a resolution of the governing board of the Salt Lake County Foundation, adopting the annual budget required for fiscal year 25 and the adjustments to fiscal year 24 budget, approving and providing for the necessary sources to fund the budgets and related matters. So, with that, thank you, we have a motion and a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Harrison. Any further discussion to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
All right, that passes, and I believe we don't need an emotion to adjourn, so thanks very much. We are indeed pleased to have the foundation up and running, and we're seeing some, as was mentioned by the public comments, some good revenue rolling in, and that's amazing. So, with that, we will now move to the same members as we move to the Salt Lake County New Market Tax Credit, Inc., and our first order of business is approval of meeting minutes. Oh, just Laurie on this one. So, that, is it just the three members on this one? Okay, so my apologies. Councilmember Harrison, or Councilmember, your excuse. With that, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Pretty clear who it was, given we've got two remaining. So, with that, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, there, so we are in good shape there, we passed the minutes, and now I'd entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move we open the public hearing.
Thank you, and we have a second. Do we have, the hearing is now open, do we have any comment on the New Market Tax Credit, Inc.? And we do from Steve, let's hear from Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am concerned, when I looked at the public notice website earlier today, this item had the same content as the foundation. It doesn't have the notices for the budget and the agenda for the New Market Tax Credit.
Oh, that's interesting.
Problem today.
Do we have any... Greg?
Yeah, so Steve, you're saying that the public notice posting for the NMTC, Inc. has the materials for the foundation instead of the NMTC, Inc. associated with it, is that, is that what you're saying?
It appears to be they are, they're titled that way, I didn't open them all. The foundation is two items above in the list.
Right, yeah, they should have been two separate meetings for the same time, and then they should have had the NMTC, Inc. budget and resolution for that one, and the foundation budget and resolution, so I apologize if that didn't get posted correctly. We did post them in public view in the government center also. Go ahead, Mayor.
So, I, on legal counsel for this entity is Darren?
NMTC, Inc., yeah, it's Ross, and there he is, he's an attendee.
So, I guess the question is, of course, with our apologies, but are we in legal compliance if they were posting places other than electronically?
Yeah, so, if you could make, there we go, Ross Keel from Parsons Daily, he's on with us now, so Ross, go ahead.
And we're double checking, Steve, to see if, to just confirm what you shared. So, Ross, any thoughts on that? According to Greg, we have postings in a variety of places, and assuming that there was a mistake in the posting electronically, are we still in compliance and still in a position to proceed tonight?
Yeah, let's check and see how it was posted online and see if the content was there, if it was just a mislabeling. I'm checking the applicable rule here about the other postings being sufficient.
Yeah, so, and this is not Ross speaking, but Bridget's take is as long as the members did review the proper documents. Indeed, I did, and it looks, I'm seeing yeses from the other two board members, we should be okay to proceed. Ross, any concerns based on that input from the district attorney office?
No, I don't have any concerns, given that, given that level of notice.
Great, all right, we appreciate that, Steve, and thanks for the clarification around that, and we will, we're continuing to look at the links, but we appreciate you, your eagle eye on behalf of the residents, so thanks, Steve. Any additional comments, Steve?
No, I have no materials, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move that we close.
All right, we have a motion to close. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. With that, any further comment? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any board comments?
I was able to review the actual documents, I just want to make sure that's clear, so...
Great, I was as well, and you as well, okay. We have confirmation that I'll reviewed the proper documents on this, and then we can now move to the resolution. And the resolution that I would entertain is a resolution of the governing board of the Salt Lake County New Market Tax Credits, Inc., adopting the annual budgets required for fiscal year 2025 and the necessary adjustments to the 2024 budgets, approving and providing the necessary sources to fund the budget and related matters. Could I get a motion to that effect?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion from Member Cushing and a second from Member Stringham. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes, and with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And a thank you to Chair Cushing, it's been a pleasure, thank you for your time in multiple, wearing multiple hats, but it's been great to work with you on these boards. Okay, anything, any other business? I hope not, Madam Chair, because you're the only one less standing or sitting.
You can improvise, you know.
All right, good job, everyone. Thank you, clerks.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.